The other gym is in the library. And this is the college. It's in the new building.
Library.
Yeah, we went to the new building.
That's the gym.
Yeah. And that's just the one that just rolled.
I said, that's correct. I couldn't see.
I'm trying to. Here is.
Except that is part of your.
Mr. Mayor, it's six o'clock.
The one that can change. Yeah. Yes. They come another. So. Yep. It was back today.
Okay. Basically, hello, my name is. Six. All right.
Carter.
Here.
Ellis. Gaken. Hodgkin.
Here.
Lawrence.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
Morrison. Newville. Bertini.
Here.
Fredo.
Here.
Seedorf. Taylor. Orr.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a presentation on community service. It resolves state intervention. City Minister.
Actually, I have a thought for my. Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca Wise, she's able to get some more microphones and add into this. And we will have updated information for you where the next meeting will be. Since that has been located a place. So, um, thank you, Mayor and Council for this meeting this evening. I wanted to go over, I'm going to start us off by going over the survey that we launched with the community for the 2025 budget. I'm going to share my screen. Apologies. Same personal. It's very different. So just some specifics on the survey and methodology that we use. We opened the survey on April 16th and it was closed on June 6th. We did a municipal resident survey, which means we didn't just ask like true all questions or just one type. We answered, we asked several types of questions that allowed people to gauge serving their satisfaction with the services that they received. We also allowed some free write, pre-written sections that allow people to expand and to, you know, provide additional comments to their answers. The survey population was for the residents of the city of Aberdeen. We did have a few that were not identified as not being from the city. And the contact methods that we used were the city's website. We printed flyers and put them on the front of the finance department. We also listed it on the website and we also sent it out to the website. It was served. We saw the city's Facebook page. We also made announcements at city council meetings and at the last workshop that we had. And then we also had printed surveys available in the lobby of city hall. We were also making mail in mail. We only received one written survey. And so we were able to collect the survey. The collection method was the online survey as well as the printed survey. And we also had a QR code that we sent out to all of you to share on your Facebook pages. And we also sent it to all community men, like the downtown Aberdeen Association, all of our association members, as well as all of our governmental partners. We also sent it to the faith community, our community resource groups, pretty much like any one of our partners. But immediately they sent out a media release. So we had a whole slew of ways that we were able to get the word out. Why we conduct the budget survey. I hope that this becomes the first one that we've ever done and I hope that we continue this practice in the future to gauge how we're doing. I would also, you know, I'm not a professional statistician, so it would be nice to kind of see maybe in the future of the city. But if that's for private to do something like this, to really, really want to get down to the nitty gritty and understand the community's perspective on city services. That might be something for the city to invest in in 2025. So, um, priority based budgeting is something that I started with Mayor Shave and I'm encouraging all of you to consider that for the future as well. What that means is it's a way to look at our budget and consider the services that we provide and a method to achieve financial health and wellness. So it basically, it basically acts as a performance measure for the city and that we listen to the community and what they would like to see done. So if they want a memorial day, so that, you know, an event next year, that would be something that we would try to fit in. And that contributes to people's satisfaction and the livability of our city. So those are, that's just a very simple example. It helps us determine a general course of action. In case of like tax or other revenue shortfalls, we didn't really focus on that in this particular survey. That's why I think in the future it'd be helpful to, if those are the types of, if we are experiencing tax shortfall in the future, this would be helpful to, for us to understand where the community wants us to spend, spend our resource. It measures residences' preferences and allocating tax revenues to various city services. You'll see a lot of feedback on homelessness for and against, you know, serving that particular community and allocating any city resources to that. So, and I will email out all of the comments, there were hundreds of comments listed. So I want to email those out in a PDF because it's. So I want to email those out in a PDF because it's a huge, it's like 19 pages worth of spreadsheets or, yeah, spreadsheets. So I'll send that out to all of you after this, after the meeting or when I get back into the city's online local drive. So. It also helps us identify services that cities and that citizens are satisfied with. So you'll see a lot of positive feedback on a lot of services that we provide. But then you can also do the opposite. You can almost understand the things that citizens aren't satisfied with and should we, how should we invest our money in that way? And how can that help them understand what we need to do as well? It helps us understand where the most important issues to improve the livability of our community. You'll see comments on things like sidewalks, especially what do we need to make changes to? Any kind of lease services or priority of that. And it will help gauge, it helps gauge the overall status of action and identify issues that affect residents' perceptions. I will say that a lot of the comments in the, that are left are pretty negative. So just like when we launched the homeless survey, I said, hey, this is just, this, this just helps us know where we are. And where we think is like, if we receive a lot of negative, a lot of negative comments, the only way is, the only way to go is up. So this will help us kind of understand where we are. So there, that's like one way to look at this, you know? So I, yeah, so that's one way to look at it. I want to call attention to our revenues. So I have revenues here. Oh, that's pretty small. I'm very sorry. Revenues here between 2018 and 2023. Revenues are very important for us. These are our tax sources. These are very important for us to understand what, how things are trending for us in the city. As you can see, we had a pretty great, not a great year in 2020. That's during COVID, but we did receive a lot of market money. We received a lot of funding through the state and the federal government to cover a lot of things that way. Then you see we have a huge drop off in 2019. We recovered a little bit in 2022. And then we dropped off again in 2023. Typically, the city. It estimates or it forecasts even more conservatively when it comes to our budget revenues. And this year, last year, we, for 2024, we budgeted more realistic. So I don't know what that's going to look like. I do know that the first three months of this year, we had minor shortfalls in our revenue sources. April, we bounced back. We did end up above what we had budgeted. And it's important to pay attention to revenues because our entire operating budget depends on, or the majority of our. Our operating budget depends on revenues. And that revenues include sales tax, property taxes. You know, any kind of brands, anything that we get from outside of resource, outside sources, our utility rates, that sort of thing. So this is very important to pay attention to. And it's something that we as a leadership team here are anticipating that we're probably going to experience somewhat of a shortfall this year. We're planning for that. I want you to also keep in mind that last year and for many years, the city has been passing a deficit budget. That means that we've been spending more than we're bringing in. So I want you to understand that if we're making decisions that I believe that this is the year we're going to have to make some really hard decisions. To pass the balance of budget. I think that's a very important goal. For all of us to achieve. All right. So I'm going to hop actually into another screen. Excuse me, onto another screen. Can you see this someday? So this is a new way that I'm doing this. I didn't have to build a whole presentation in Microsoft program and just kind of build it for me. So I thought that's. Let's see. Smart. Let me change. Okay. So 94% of our respondents said that they were from Aberdeen. 5% said that they came somewhere else. Those could be business owners. It could be people who shop in Aberdeen or who are visiting. Which ward do you live in? Ward four came in the highest at 17%. I believe it was about 49 people. Ward three came in next. Now, 40% of the people said that they didn't know which ward they lived in. Last year, I provided a map to kind of show people where they, where they do live. But this year I didn't, and I did kind of on purpose to see if people knew which ward they were in. So that tells you right there, 40% of the respondents don't know which ward they. And that doesn't include the 17 that responded that they don't live in Aberdeen. If it know, you have to move to another question. These indicate how well your needs are being met by each of the major city services listed below. As you can see, affordable housing is very important, 37%. To 22% said that their needs were being partly met or not met at all. Animal patrol services mostly met to fully met. So I considered these orange and red sections here to be mostly positive and partly met to not met. Kind of a little more negative. So as you can see, about 55% or 52% or more people said they're either mostly met or fully met. Code enforcement. 28% said not met, 33% said partly met. Emergency services, this one was very, very, this is a very big number. 51% of the people who responded said that it was fully met and 30% said that it was mostly met. That's 80% of people gave somewhat positive responses to that. Homeless outreach and encampments. 45% said not met and 36% said partly met. So that's, you know, over 50% of folks that are saying that their needs are not being met. With only about 4% saying fully met. People are very pleased with library services. 48% of folks said they're fully met, as well as 31% saying mostly met. Very few people, very little. But that's, that's a great number as well. People are very happy with our library services. Useless properties came in low as well. 42% said partly met and 37% said not met at all. So that's, that's another area we can definitely improve. Our reinforcement was independent, same vote. About 50% went between partly met and not met. So 25 and 25%. Parks and recreation people seem pretty satisfied, 64% rated in somewhere between mostly met and fully met. Police services, again, similar to fire. 37% to 34% said mostly met and met. Senior center, which is something we really, we don't really work with senior center. That's something Stacy's turning her focus to this year. 23% and 32% said mostly meant to fully met. So that's, that's good. Stacy's going to be increasing some of the programming out there. So those numbers need change next year once we get an idea of what that looks like. Now, that box, partly met to mostly met. And there are some comments in the comment section, which you'll see is that there are, there are a lot of residents that complain there aren't enough sidewalks. And those may be people located on the south side or in more, I guess, area that may be more rural like this for, for city. But maybe the more outlying areas that don't have such. That's something for the city to think, to think about as we have some TBD money and TIV money that's available that could bring more improvements. Right now, we are making improvements in installing sidewalks on the cosmopolis to the bridge. And then also along Sumner Avenue. So we're, those are some pretty active walkways that are moving. So that's something for us to think about as we're living, maybe moving into the neighborhood. Our next set of projects are moving into the neighborhoods. Streets. We have, you know, you see here, we have 12% that are fully met, 30% mostly met. This is kind of pretty even down, both like pretty even, mostly positive and 35 saying partly met. Street lighting, you'll see a lot of comments about street lighting as well. I'm assuming these are, these are more comments in the neighborhoods. With 37% saying mostly met. But then there's 28% that say partly met. So that's something to consider. Last year, this city installed lights in fifty alleys as part of Mayor Shave's agenda. So that might be something for, you know, for next year to consider. We can find out where people think these streetlights can be installed. Permitting pretty positive, 20% and 33% mostly meant to fully met. So it's over 50% of people voted. Water services as well. Pretty positive response, 38% saying fully met, 30% saying mostly met. 16% or 12% said partly met or not met respectively. Tour is the same way, fully met, super services and mostly met at 28%. And stormwater services, about the same, there's going to be 30% and 30% to 30% are fully met and mostly met. You'll see the comments here. And like I said, I'll, I'll send, I'll send these to you again. These are, there, there isn't concerted feedback in there, but there's also, you know, very negative feedback. So I just wanted you to be aware of. That gives us a gauge of how people are feeling. And there are about. Oh, there were over 200 comments, I believe, in this particular section. Because it was the first. And then, then you'll see it start to twindle off in more of the comment sections as the survey goes on. How would you rate the overall quality of life in Aberdeen? 2% said excellent with 39% as the largest would fair and 34% saying good and 23 coming in at four. I would do rate our community as a place to, or to live. Sorry, it's not showing. To live. Excellent, 6%. Good, 29% fair, 38%, 24% sad or. How satisfied are you with the following public safety services from the city? But very good numbers overall. Emergency services, 58% and 31%. That's like over 80%. Well, maybe 90% of people are, 80% of people saying they're very happy. EMS services, fire response, very close, very close numbers as well. Our community enforcement, we recognize that people are, they're kind of split down the middle, but we do listen to the somewhat dissatisfied, disatisfied and very dissatisfied folks. We have made changes to the way I just met with the team today, the public works team, police team and a community development team to talk about the vehicles on the streets. So we have made some process changes and so far we think it's working. So we'll check in with the team after, I don't know, three weeks of initially meeting with them. And we think we're headed in the right direction when it comes to these vehicles getting tagged. And it's taking a combination, because we only have one parking enforcement officer. And we now have the public works team as they are out and about, working on different properties or, you know, they are noticing vehicles, taking note of it, renewing it or calling it into the public force team. They're tracking that and sending, then sending it over to the police department and then go from there. Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I think that although it may not be revealed or disclosed directly here, I think a lot of the frustration regarding parking enforcement, probably I'm going to assume there's some check I can. It's more about all of these RVs and vans and other vehicles that the homeless are living in or standing in and that are all are sitting. I think that's a big part because, you know, most citizens don't understand that because of the current laws and situations that handle. So, but they, they see it as a person and it's what they call it.
Right. Yeah. So. So we did talk about that a little bit and we talked about, especially via street rent and property, that goes to the public enforcement. And so, yeah, I can go read in the comments since I sent this out. You'll kind of see where people are coming from. There are a lot of ones that are very. The ID programs, the volunteer programs that we have at the police department. We have 44% saying they're very good, very satisfied and 32% saying, someone says. Police investigation, 39% to 35% very satisfied to somewhat satisfied. Police control, 40% very satisfied and 30% somewhat satisfied. These are, when it comes to public safety, these are very good, very, very good numbers, very positive. I had a meeting earlier today with Walmart. Some of the Walmart managers stated that our police are very responsive out there. And so it's good to hear that they're responsive to the business community as well. So overall, I think these are very positive numbers for our public safety service. How satisfied are you with the following utility and public work services from the city? As you can see, these all look very good. 56% very satisfied, 50% very satisfied, 37% storm rating, some very satisfied. Very good numbers here. Where we start to twindle off a little bit and start to grow into somewhat dissatisfied, very dissatisfied are sidewalks and by lanes. I think we're all, we all know that we lack by lanes. We're just, we're not there yet. We are, we are going to start like building that, but we're implementing sidewalks. Or we recognize that's one of the ways that our city needs to improve. And if I keep going over something too fast or if you need explanation, please feel free to stop me. I'm happy to answer any other question, any questions.
Do you want to take questions anytime as we go through this?
Yeah, please.
I know that we have a lot of public works projects going on, signing up some very major projects like the levee. For some, they're having their projects, things like that. Down the road, a few years, when we get on top of some of the other things and get that completed, you know, are there federal or state monies available, grants and such, or local improvements to things like our streets and sidewalks?
I. I'm assuming there might be. I don't know because those are, those are street funds and street funds are typically general funds. And the funds that are out there at least at the state level, I think we could use some funding in different ways. Some, some of those are more general funds that might be available. We probably could use that. Most of the general, most of the funding that's available in public works are for water systems, super systems or improvements that, I don't know, more utility based things. But I don't know what many for outside of TIV and TBD that we call already yet every year. Outside of those, I don't know what else we could use. But we do have a pretty healthy TIV and TBD fund that we use. And we use that specifically to leverage other funds. There, I guess there are some funds through DOT because they have a industrial and safety program that we're using. And that's how we're actually building out the Sumner and. Boulevard Curtis. I don't remember what that street is, but the road that connects.
Yeah. But key monies, those would be more for like a longer near skin type.
Exactly, exactly. That's why they qualify for those. So as far as like the neighborhoods, I think that's where that TIV money, TBD money and TIV money come from that. And that's how they can be used. But we, we again, use that money to leverage federal dollars so that we can get more, more money. We can use more money basically for larger projects that we couldn't necessarily afford on our own.
Yeah, most of those state grants, state programs are oriented to material streets. There is a state loan and point over 87% that we could apply for to focus on residential street and sidewalk improvements. There, there's also some private entities, a state insurance commission or something like that. Um, or something like that, used to have a safe streets. Um, safe schools, they brought this, safe relative schools, thank you, program that cities can apply for. Um, and it doesn't matter if it's arterial or residential or sidewalk or street.
We also have a, a program that we just, we run locally and that is, that we, the program is that um a residential. Uh, a homeowner could apply to the program and get put on the list and they all they would have to pay for their, for the materials. The cost of the cement and then on the city covers the labor and could, would improve when, make repairs for their sidewalk. Um. How satisfied are you with other city services? Other city services are local parks, recreation programs, permitting services, library, overall customer service. Um. Local parks, pretty, everyone seems pretty satisfied, those that took the um, um, the survey. Um, recreation programs as well, um twenty-one to uh twenty-one percent said very satisfied, forty-five percent said someone. Um, permitting services, uh over fifty percent, so that's twenty-six percent saying they're very satisfied, somewhat satisfied, thirty-five percent. Library services, fifty percent are very satisfied and thirty-two percent are somewhat. Overall customer service, somewhat satisfied and forty-one percent is the highest figure there, um but overall, it's like. Or generally located, but satisfied with their services. Code enforcement at eighteen percent, very satisfied and twenty-six percent, um somewhat satisfied. Now, they did, this one did receive um. Forty or about twenty-one percent, somewhat dissatisfied, satisfied, the twenty-seven percent very dissatisfied. Cultural and historic offerings, somewhat satisfied, thirty-nine percent seems is the highest there. How satisfied are you with the level of access to art, culture, science and or historic programs or experiences in Aberdeen? Somewhat satisfied, forty-five percent. Then highest was somewhat dissatisfied, twenty-two percent. How would you rate your overall feeling of safety in Aberdeen? You feel, um, only nine percent said very standard. Thirty-four percent said somewhat safe and then you see thirty-three percent came in second at somewhat uncertain. Um, and then I also added um comments so that people can talk about um why they feel. Provide a little more context around why they feel in city. What do you think are the major issues facing Aberdeen in the next five years? Please pick your top three. Um. Crime and drugs came in at number one at twenty-two percent. Homelessness came in second at twenty-one percent. Affordable housing payment third at um. Affordable housing insurance, eight, three thousand boss came in at fifteen percent. Those are the top three, everything else was kind of in the single digit. Um, there's economics or unemployment floor. So I feel like those are all somewhat intertwined. Please tell us how the city is doing managing the following, managing the public, um managing the public's money. Uh, thirty-nine percent said for. Twenty-seven percent said fair, keeping residents informed. Thirty-four percent said fair, thirty-eight percent said for. Uh, delivering services efficiently. Um, thirty-one percent said good, thirty-one, one-four percent said fair and twenty-four percent said for. Being focusing on priorities that matter most to residents. Forty-eight percent said for, twenty-seven percent said fair. Keeping local businesses informed, um thirty-four percent said for, twenty-six percent said fair. Focusing on priorities that matter to local businesses, forty percent said for and twenty-eight percent said fair. So, um, you know, we can interpret these as like we want, I think people maybe don't feel heard. Um, I think it's, you know, keeping residents informed, I think we're, that was one of the type of areas that the council listed. Values was communication, we can do a better job communicating, it sounds like people want to be communicated with. Um. Focusing on the priorities that matter most to residents, forty-eight percent saying um for that. So we're not doing a good job listening to the citizens either. So our, so I think, you know, these are good opportunities and the council has created more opportunities for the public to be involved. Um, so we'll have to figure out where the fair gift is to get a word out or how we need to. Get more people civically involved and um how to, how to make sure that their voices are heard. In order to achieve a balanced budget, are you open to one of the following? And I do see the mistake in this question, I see now that I should not have put all of the above or none of the above. I think just kind of giving people options this way and I, and I've seen it in other surveys, would have pushed people to really have to get it. Um, so uh in the increase that fees rates and charges or cut to services, all of the above or none of the above. Obviously forty-five percent came in at none of the above. Um, but nineteen percent, that was the second highest thing and it had cut to services. Um, and then eighteen percent is all of the above, both increased, big raise fees and charges or and, and cut to services. Then we go into demographics, I wanted to know who was taking the surveys. Um, twenty-two percent are between the ages of forty-five and forty-four, second came in was um fifty-five to sixty-four votes. Um, so the ages between eighteen and thirty-four, which is the big gap, that even the lowest, we have uh the young people that are not engaged in what's happening. Around the city or um not taking any service or not interested in doing this.
If you, if we have the category above sixty-four. No, I'm thinking.
Oh, no, I was saying something. No, I was. So, I, I do count them as people, I promise. All their came in at number one and twenty percent, I'm very sorry, I just needed to scroll down, my apologies. Um, and then the forty-five and fifty-four year olds came in second. At twenty-two percent. Uh, we wanted to find out what their employment status was, twenty-seven percent said they were employed and thirty-one percent said they were retired. Which is interesting because like I said, sixty-five and above at twenty-nine percent and then um thirty-one percent are retired. What describes your racial identity? Um, eighty-four percent identified as white and I think the reason for this one is that twenty percent of our um population is Latino. So I wanted to see how well we were reaching out or how well the news was getting out or I, or the news is getting out to other, of people of other cultures in the street. You know, do we need to include, um, I noticed that everything we do is in English, maybe you include more Spanish things or, how, how do we include people? Um, especially also the large population of people that live in work, like your, um, how do we include? Eighty-four percent of the people who took the survey are homeowners or are homeowners, um fifteen percent. Um, rent, there was one, I know it's rated at zero percent, but there was one person who identified as unhoused, um, who took the survey. And um what's your approximate um household income, twenty-seven percent came in at fifty thousand or less and it goes down from there. So that concludes um the survey. I wanted to kind of, again, oh, I'm so sorry. So, when it came to just some of the comments that were made, I, I did take, I did put in some in here. Uh, homelessness issue needs to be solved, the cost of living is high here, gas, for example, gas is more expensive here. Someone could use P Wallow as an example that it's more expensive to live here than P Wallow. Uh, need more park living enforcement, need to address nuisance properties, need more report localities, street needs repair. Increase service procedures, or sidewalks, vacant buildings are still an issue. Public utility comments are mostly satisfied with services, expensive, more street lighting, more sidewalks, more bike lanes, they love customer service. Others did, others to these services, fund a museum, concerned with people in the library and parks, um certain, you know, in various. Characters in the library and parks, remove um historic events. Libraries that were great, modernize the boom, boom street people watch. Celebrate cultural thing anymore, um, you know, people feel like we're losing out on, you know, our resources by not um. Pay any contributor, borrowing his legacy and, excuse me, I'm afraid I technical, but need more cultural and historic activities. For safety, um, across the border, if we saw that, I do not would say people crowd my neighborhood. Drug addicts roam our streets, Arnold Hill is safe and not safe for middle school kids. So that concludes um our survey, again, since the first of its time that the city has ever launched something like this. Um, to kind of engage livability and overall satisfaction of the community. So, we now know where we are and how we can move up by based on. Based on the feedback that we see, like we can gather our local information, determine what are the next, how do we invest our twenty-twenty-five budget? Sidewalks, bike lanes, more street lights, you know, what are the improvements that we can make, so. Um, are there any questions regarding this survey?
Well, I kind of saw, I kind of saw, I'm sorry. I kind of saw it, but couldn't catch twenty-two, but then a lot of folks uh weren't happy with services, the one they less. They're complaining that the services they power to execute right now. Seems to be uh, for not a social society, but we think we are. We have to pay for these services somehow, and then, you know, I'm all for a balanced budget, so it's gonna be hard next year to give out. Over in the town, we're gonna do away with some of that, we're happy to be at. We're not gonna be able to take more.
Yeah, our, as you, as you saw, like our public utility services or EMS, fire, everyone is very pleased with the services overall. But we are going to have to make some tough decisions to balance a budget, so, and. Our um utility services are separate from the general fund. Those are enterprise funds, as we kind of, as I explained in a previous budget meeting, we think that can happen. So those ones themselves, you know, as we're making cuts, the general budget is the main, general fund is the main operative budget. Um, for the city, that funds leases, fire, parks, community development, it, it's, I mean, it's guilty in, in uh Chief Golding's presentation. And the conundrum that we're running, see when it comes to utility, um, we have to switch the EMS, uh utility billing, so. Beelts, what we run into, the dependence on the general fund, that it will affect other programs that we offer, so. I think overall, people seem to want more than sidewalks, they want things like that, sidewalks are part of the street fund, general fund. Um, general lending um division. So those are the types of things we have to think about as we're piecing together in the budget, um and using this information as some sort of performance measure.
I would like to see us um, uh. Take this information the next level um out, so we look at um. Um, which of these metrics can we focus on part of the moving? Like customer service, communications, things that um. Doing okay, is a good enough and how we start identifying, okay, what steps could we take? Um, that might bring these numbers up in another survey. And how can we um? How can we integrate some of these comments and priorities into our budget work? And whether that's all of us sending ideas to you, Ruth, or we have unfinished stuff remaining and. Okay, um, next steps with the survey, I think it would be a, a good way to really make use of this information. I think this is not one of the two, I would love to see the, us get the payment and get more responses, because we're a town of almost seventeen thousand five hundred people. And this is only three hundred. And it doesn't seem to be a really good representation, just because we're lacking so many people. And it, I don't know, it'd be nice to see more participation.
Right. And I think, I think there's also, when it comes to the complaints portion. Maybe it's not actually solving the problem, maybe it's more education, because when people are upset about like doing the nuisance properties. Maybe they don't understand what the processes that are community development or past that ever go, they just see that and have a neighbor that has trash all over and they're sick of it. They don't understand like that, that neighbor has rights too, like they don't understand what saving has to do as well, so there might be that as well.
Well, I think to one degree that specifically is there are a lot of people who, if you're trying to explain to them, hey, there's a process. It's complex or it's time consuming or expensive or whatever. The, because the feedback I've received from some constituent business, they don't care, they just want to take care of it, they want to take care of it now.
Right.
So the education is important, um, I also echo what uh Mayor Moore was saying, and I was gonna say the exact same thing. In that, you know, people uh say they're very happy with certain services, water services, but then they say we want cuts. Well, then you start cutting, that's a double edged sword, you're gonna cut now, suddenly they're not gonna be happy. Because the services aren't there, they're lacking, and they don't, have, they don't respond quickly and et cetera. Um, to the degree that Councilmember Ellis was saying, you know, how do we approach this, maybe one way is. We try to get citizens to say, okay, of these things that you listed that are important or critical. What are your top five and rank them in order from one to five? And we spend a five, we develop like a five year plan and say we can't get to everything all at once, but this year, we're gonna focus on the number one issue. So here we just focus on the number two issue and kind of go down the line and see how well we can respond and deal with those. Um, because we aren't gonna take care of everything you need the fire.
And I think that there are a lot of problems that are intertwined that are related to one another, so when you see, when you read the comments in there that people feel unsafe. And that they don't want to go down the visibility of homelessness. That also impacts our economic development and economic development, and if we don't have enough of it, then we don't get sales tax. And we don't get sales tax and our revenues don't go well and then we can't, we have to start cutting our budget, cutting services and really start making that decision. So, an investment in solving these issues is an investment, a financial investment in our city. Um, we might have to invest financially in order to receive money in return, we might need to grow our money. So I think we have to think about it that way, that we have to give a little to get a lot. Um, so again, reading through the, all of these things are intertwined, especially as people are staying here and they feel unsafe. It could be just adding streetlights to their neighborhood, or it could be that we need to. Sell homelessness, or we need to um add another box office, or we need to, you know, those are the types of things we need to start really thinking about. I got um, people, sorry, I'm pretty. I don't know if you're telling us that, though. Okay, okay, so um, people have mentioned to me quite a bit about, because our number one and two issue, crime, drugs and homelessness, that's number one and two. Um, and I think we all know people.
Um, and I think we all know people that are living on very little money here, you know, um, social security, they might not be getting fourteen hundred dollars a month, but they're paying their rent, you know, with the trailer park, and, you know, they're trying to take care of themselves. We all know that we're submitting a quarter of a billion dollars a year to help the homeless people, you know, that are down, living underneath the bridge, to keep it clean, and, and providing, uh, you know, toilets for them, and, and waste services. So, one of the things that people have mentioned to me, and I, and I don't know if it's something that we can explore, but I think um, the vast majority of the people that are under the bridge are on some sort of, you know, social security, I, and people have mentioned to me, you know, can they contribute, you know, to what it costs to house them here, even though they're living, you know, in a tent or whatever, it's not free, you know, so I think, you know, if, if they were, um, given a permit, you know, that they're here, and, and then a certain, you know, percentage is expecting for them to be able to contribute to cleaning up, you know, a lot of people have mentioned to me, where's that personal accountability, you know, and I think sometimes, right, you know, raising children, if you don't make them contribute and help, um, and you have a man doing everything for them, they just don't, you know, they don't get it. So a lot of people have mentioned that to me, and I think it would be good for them to participate in the expense, um, because no one lives for free, you know, and other people aren't living on the same amount of money that they're living on, they're paying bills, and they're keeping them in front of their head, and their money's very tight, so, um, I'd like to see something like that explored, you know, where they contribute to the expense of having them here, but they don't really contribute, then maybe there are places you can live where you don't have to contribute, but also I thought for some people, I, I think that was a running model for, um, the homeless shelter, because that, uh, for the homeless village, was, was the, that Medicare, the, the, the things that, that the subsidies that they are receiving would be charged um, for the services that they're receiving, so I think that, that was part of the, the funding.
Is that, so part of the money is for maybe we will go to them, you know?
That's, yeah, that's part of that, that's what, uh, all these, a lot of these services are doing, is that they provide service, and then they take a certain part of it, that's where it's.
So they talk to Cap, they mentioned them.
Right, right, and that was part of the funding mechanism, is that, in, in a roundabout way, they would be paying for services that they receive.
They're building social security separately, but I'd like to see it have a look of skin and pain, you know, for everybody, because it's, it's never really the, you know, the reality.
I'd kind of like to expand a little bit on, on what Councilperson Noshan said, is that, that she's offered a solution, or an idea, or a solution, and I think, uh, the survey, although it was great, we have all those, uh, numbers, it would have been nice if in each one of those sections, maybe to have, uh, do you have any positive ideas that would help? Because maybe there are people out there that know, it's like, you just gave us an option, that there are probably going to be a lot of those similar kind of ideas, that might be able to help us, if we just need a big one, rather than, rather than being the same, yeah, rather than people always saying, no, don't get this, like, kind of give us this.
I, well, I'll, I'll make sure that's included in, like, an extra, maybe.
That's, um, people end up can't afford anything, so, they may not be able to, maybe they're just a minimum of a freshman.
But I think when you go over the budget, but then there are people that live in the trailer parks, they're living on twelve hundred dollars a month, because they get their social security, and they're, they're paying their bills, you know, and, and some people say they can't, but if you're living, and you don't have any overhead expenses at all when you're living, I think we should have encouraged them to contribute something, because I have had people living with three, and they didn't want to ask for rent, you know, so, you know, a lot of people, they just want to live with three, because they don't want to, you know, yeah, so.
I'd like also to have, kind of registration, so.
That, that, I totally can see done, I think that's what they tried to do when they were down, you know, on the river, and they tried to, you know, have a permit for them, and then you know where they came from, how long they've been here, I would love to see, you know, more information like that, and I was told that Cap from Olympia sent us fifty people to me, then, did anybody hear about that? Um, yeah, they sent, they, fifty people, Cap from Olympia sent them to Aberdeen, I'll, I'll research a little bit more for you, but I just heard that, so.
Other comments, questions? Of the survey?
Why, I'm just a lawyer for the city, if it's get rid of entire campus. People, okay, hear me, I think we should get a different lawyer for the city, get rid of that camp underneath altogether, um, and I feel like this survey, finding out the numbers of how many people actually took it, how many residents there are here, uh, I talked to a lot of people around here, there is a huge disconnect, um, whether it's the age range, um, the fact there's not a lot of jobs in the city, uh, the people are just fed up and upset, I don't know why, you're acting like it's secret, uh, just downtown looks the way it does, it's been neglected for a long time, um, so the worst, there's no money coming in, just nobody, nobody wants to take it serious. Not saying up here, I'm saying people, that's the image that's portrayed, um, so that's things to think about.
Right, and I understand our Councilmember Carter, I understand exactly where you're coming from, and I've heard a lot of say comments from citizens, but the other thing that we need to make sure citizens understand is the city government is not a panacea or curing all ills, um, we have limited resources, there are always certain things that we can do, we are constrained by a number of different factors, whether they're financial, legal, or otherwise, of what we can do, um, and if people don't like the way something is, I always encourage them to suggest ways that it can be improved, or dealt with in some way, but also make sure they know what we need and do as a city, what limitations that we do have as a city, so.
One thing, one thing I can say to that, to this, if nothing changes, this is, this is just how it's gonna be, you can, you can, you do whatever you want, um, I can tell you from my own experience, it is what I see only, uh, I don't let my kids play outside at all, because it's not safe, um, the things that I see continuously, and, and, and it's just, it's growing, it's, and it's, that's, that's what your residents, the area are doing, um, that's what you know. You want, you know, they're told it's gonna get more expensive, we're here now, I mean, what's, what's the point of even living here? That's, that's a lot of people.
Any other questions or comments?
Um, I was thinking, if we want to be more, we'll do the survey, possibly we could like put out with utility, going off for like ten dollars off your water bill, I think we'd do it. And for their tenant.
Yeah, that's, that would be the council just set aside, say, a thousand dollars, or, you know, whatever, five dollars, or, you know, her bill, or something like that. I've, I've seen that done, they take the survey, and they got a visitor's address and things like that, so.
Um, thank you, I'm now going to pass this on to Reverend, and Assistant Director Stacy Barnum. They're nice, I'm sorry, I'm going to pass it on, I have to pass it on to Chief Dave Golding, um, who is going to start talking again, this is all budget, twenty twenty five budget related, um, and are just the budget related in general, so going to pass it on to him, I'll throw his presentation for you about the EMS, um, utility.
Okay, okay, thank you, uh, so, just kind of trying to, I'll hold a little bit of course, we have, you know, a few discussion, covering about the between the EMS customer service study, and the opinion, the opinion, you know, where do we want to go with the utility rate for the EMS side of things, um, so, just kind of go over a few things here, and just to kind of kind of find them up for you, and kind of job the dictionary, and wrap up a few of these things, and we try some discussion to kind of give us the direction of staff, like, where we may want to. So, I'm going to go a little bit over again, the, the study's purpose, uh, why we did it, and kind of what it really kind of plays into, just like any very quick, brief overview of our budget for the fire department, to give the EMS side, helping to find each other, and just looking at one of those options, such as a bridge, and how we, some study, what they, they look like. So, the purpose of doing this, why do we need to raise that in the data method? Well, uh, you know, while you're not listening here, but it is a requirement in our C W for us to do, instead of occasionally, uh, to maintain one of our rates, and it doesn't find you those fair, just about when raised, or the services that we're providing in the EMS business. Also what it does, it helps us to ensure what happens, kind of the revenue for those services that we are providing, uh, things are, to be able to keep up with, you know, the, the biggest part of our budget, which is salaries, uh, and the benefits and such should go with that, uh, we need a way, a way to reserve, to maintain good quality, reserve talents for us to use as we need to in the future, uh, the ability to have likely equipment, vehicles, and what supplies. Um, all of the cost of these, those supplies, they're not staying, they're increasing as well all the time, so, you know, the cost of doing business just in itself is increasing as well. Otherwise, with the laws and financial agreements, uh, again, going back to the R C W, having to do these rates that is to justify and spell out what our rates should be within EMS utility. And by, and this just, it also goes into place with our city's credit rating, allows us to give all this to give manage your voter, low interest rates and such for future purchases, not necessarily just within EMS, but on a citywide basis as well. Uh, so, some things just to remember about our rates, they have been lagging behind our expenses, they have not been increasing over the years, and keep with the rise in cost of our operations. Uh, excuse me, so really, we're at this point where we need to decide what type of rate increase we want to go with to meet those operational requirements that's put onto our system. You know, thinking about we have aging equipment, they're pretty in a great place, uh, and they have wages, uh, to keep our firefighters and permits here volatile, uh, and you can come to them now, they're increased call lines with the shoulders of staff, which in turn increase over to, I can tell you right now, we'll be involved door of, uh, people coming, going, and leaving, uh, we are spinning a bottle over time, just maintaining our minimum staff. Uh, and just an example, in twenty twenty three, we used a neighborhood of six hundred fifty thousand dollars to cover the gap between what we're actually collecting for wearings streams, and what it takes to operate EMS facility. And this is a small, small part of this either, because it's small, but just a comparison of just what our EMS revenues come in, and what the expenditures are for the fire. And as you can see, the lighter colors, the darker ones are expenditures, and it's just, they're not, you know, so, it's topic. So how does cities fund EMS services? So there's a, there's a handful of ways this is done. Uh, I'm gonna start at the bottom, where everybody got back to, so, billing for service, I mean, you uh, and if you recall from the last presentation, I had a kind of little talk about how that billing process works, um, and then when we do, uh, give them our services for a pageant, we don't see, if you're a resident, we're billing the insurance, anything that is left over after insurance payment, we do not charge our residents, that is, it is written off, if you will, uh, and not, that is, to the observation. Uh, if you're a non-resident, and those funds we do go after, that's billing on that, it's true. Uh, partnerships, uh, we don't have a big partnership that we do to provide the service, only show it down. Say it that way, um, but we do have partnerships with our neighboring districts that help each other out, and to help provide the service. Uh, general funds, uh, some cities will be for this strictly out of the general fund, and maybe not have any EMS utility or any other, other type of revenue stream. Um, and this is kind of part of what we're doing now, we're subsidizing our EMS operations with general fund monies. Um, a little bit, and as utility, again, that's, that's the big thing we're talking about, and that is our largest portion of our largest revenue stream that we have, helps in our operations. Now, there is the concept of a EMS lead, that is, that is another way to, to help provide new EMS, um, we're limited to a fifty cents per thousand, living for that, uh, if this is something that we went down, it's not a simple, just put the levy out and get fifty percent in being a levy, you'd have to give a sixty percent, so majority. And again, with it being limited to the fifty cents per thousand, uh, that is, if I get the right number, I'm going to write it wrong, while you're there, I'll uh, fifty cents per thousand is roughly eight hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. Our EMS utility brings the empty number to multiply million, so, that's a huge, that is a sixty five percent difference, or decrease in, in what the EMS utility, or to whatever you're bringing in, or, oh, that it's not a great item for us, because of our sus value, because it's so low, a place that has a very strong, very, uh, much higher sus valuation in our cities, and all of them are better with the EMS levy, but we're not playing that position at this time.
Can the city, or where, where do they come?
City, hopefully, um, actually does have an EMS levy, and it is currently at forty one cents per thousand, it did start out at fifty cents, but the way levies more, give the kind of culturally punch with the way it is, uh, by legal rates, it's forty one cents per thousand, now it's getting like the right around three hundred cents per thousand.
And then, and they have?
They have the EMS or two, I guess.
They have their general fund, for you, Ben?
Uh, I, I can't say about everything, for sure, but my guess is with those numbers, there are probably some using some general fund, but I can't say that. Uh, so first, you're on the services and then the general fund, um, so with us using general monies, it is not just affecting EMS, but it's also affecting other things within the state, so deploying things out of general fund and EMS is creating problems on the fire side, just internally, um, things such as fire truck replacement, they have a twenty year old fire truck, it is, uh, that means it's some issues, and we're starting to know the limits to that, we're, you know, in the process of getting what it would take to replace that today, but that's not a cheap fix for us, that's a, a issue. Seven thousand dollar fee, fee, so, and something the city is not getting very well, in the past, it's a pretty money wave for these types of purchases. Maybe there's a kind of financial state with the city, and that's one of the favorite things that we've got in our budgets, and it's that reserve funds for future outgrass replacements. As we've talked in the past, aging facilities, I just heard, uh, please, I'm sorry, my fire, these as well, uh, we've heard about our facilities, or in life, where they need to be addressed, a lot of work is not going to today, we're dumping a lot of money into our buildings, because of the maintenance. Um, our Southside Station is a sits to date, uh, we do not fit our new fire trucks there, and trying to buy new fire trucks to fit in there is very, very difficult. Uh, we've talked to vendors about that concept, it's just, you, you tell them, it can all be. We've talked to vendors about that concept, it's just, you tell them, it can only be 91 and a four inches tall, and their eyes crossed and yeah, we gave them that. The way our stations are built, they were built in the 60s, and they weren't built for the fire service of today. And not only is it just, you know, running apparatus and equipment wise, but our employees, they, they were built for a long period of things. And today, we are mailing a few. So it's not set up that tight of a call application, if you will, having separate facilities through sleeping, some are facilities for restaurants and such, or both genders. You have the seating boards are, if you've never been through a tour, I know a bunch of people that jumped through a tour last year, but if you had, if you were to be coming in, I mean, won't be able to walk you through, but it's basically lighting light with lots of upstairs, that's where it's going to be. To end it, okay, we continually are reducing employees to other agents for higher paying, less important. My favorite one to talk about is, I just lost my permanent month on that I have to go to the city of Vancouver. In probably about three, four years, I'll make what I think is a fire chief, working on the fire engine as a permanent, not transportable patients, a journey of jobs. So that's what we're fighting as far as our pay is going to go. And all the time, we'll also keep dipping into our E M S reserves as well, so not only be drawing from the general fund, we're dipping into the E M S reserve that has to go. Just going a little bit more, going back in this, and some information out of the cost of service study as well, the bulk of what we do is E M S. And this, this split is right around the national average. You figure it's 10% E M S, 20% fire, that's anywhere where most departments that. So when it comes to providing the services and paying for those services, firing the E M S, again, you know, the fireside is strictly a general fund expense, we cannot use any of the E M S money to pay for fire related things. Though you can use a general fund to pay for the events, so it's a standalone way to stream. We're able to, I don't want to say learn the line, but we have things that we're able to split allocate between the fire and the E M S side. The perfect thing to talk about here is our facilities and our power bill for example. You know, it's powers we use for fire and E M S, and we can share those costs, but not, not everything can go that way. And by keeping those, as we mentioned, or taking this general fund dollars, summing it over to E M S and also that side, you're free initiative to where those other agencies that are 100% buying on the general fund tend to suffer, and they're unable to provide the services that they need to. As an example, based in development parks, streets, able library, courts, going to things which generally sort of really is a general fund. So just a good little, or going back to our, to our budget, it's such a weird, we have those two that were in the E M S. Again, general fund be held paid for E M S, but E M S funds be not paid for general fund to be white, like this. And as we can, we split allocate costs, but that's not everything else, not all that, all of our expenses can be allocated without. Again, just remembering that there are E M S availability fees, that's 47% of what we come in with our revenues, our billing, that's our fees for the actual transports of patients, that's about 23%. The G E M T program, 21%, that is the program that helps us, gives us a influx of revenue that helps support and medicate patients with the transport. Medicated and Medicare together, some of the number of 81% of our patients, very large hair mix, those are the two beasts, let me rephrase that, those are the two insurances that pay reverse bills. So G E M T helps with the Medicaid side of that. That program, we don't want much longer to stick around, we can hear the rumors that it's going away, but that is, since rumors, we've not got an official ordinance, but if that goes away, we're going to use in 20% of our revenue. And there are contracts for service, the full service, the downtown districts that have a service, the wish cards that are sitting in our models, that we have those contracts. We did have a little bit of spite, and Ruth mentioned this, and her talked to some spite back in 2022 because of COVID, we were receiving, well, we were willing out of that over that time, but that's not money we're receiving. That is where a part of our reserves and being where they are now, that helped get us there. But again, that's not sustainable with the time changes. So those between rates, just to kind of go back to what these were again, as perceived by consultants at F C S. And again, it was looking at our operations as the urban environment utilizing the margins in R C W of what the rates should be, the main key, where our services are, that kind of levels. Within this, it includes some assumptions going into the future where, you know, it's not just this is what it needs to be today, but also what it needs to be next few years going forward, taking this assumption that's, or it's increased labor costs, supplies, various things like that. Those three options we have, for full cost recovery, which really would take the E M S and the, in a sense, is sample of, in, well, the budget, not be relying on the general fund dollars in all of the city's operations. A partial cost recovery is, you know, not as drastic as that full cost recovery, but still, using some general fund dollars are just not as much. And status quo, spending more of that, also these do require some form of a decrease to maintain our available service of both budget and operation. And again, just remembering that all of these options, we are seeing E M S reserves systematically over the timeframe period of the plan, to buy those down, help keep the rates lower, to get us down to a sustainable level for our reserves. And as I said again, just to remind you what those, those were, full cost recovery, of course, being started out, started at 58.72, and working its way up. Partial cost recovery jumping up to 45, moving forward from there, and then status quo, the sliding reset to 31.87, moving forward there. And just to talk a little bit more about really the true effect that this has on the general fund self, is in 2024, we used $2.5 million in terms of reserves to, I guess, get as most balanced budget as we could. Using option one in a 2024 scenario, would have created $2.11 million more revenue in the E M S, thus reducing that potential use of 2.5 billion reserve down to 9.34 million. So a really a sizable decrease to that, that need to use reserves. Option two, it had $1.93 billion reduction in the usual reserves, and option three, status quo, we still would have been in this 2.5 million reserves. So, and as you can see there, from a purely budget business type standpoint, option one is where we should live, because it is the one that gives the E M S into living, the ability to stand with, not in terms of like. That's just a quick preview, what we're looking at doing, and open up for discussion.
How long is that percentage that we're doing right now, is that's going, how long is that place, will we be relying on general funds to pay for part of our service?
So going back, I can't tell you what the number of years, but looking into the previous rates and budgets, I'm going to say it's been involving a good, continued so far. That we've been kind of playing this game of general fund help account, helping out with this.
So yeah, I mean, again, we've been subsidizing cities' main operating budget, several departments dependent on the budget, lazy parts, community development, those are all 100% funded out of the general fund. And so by using general fund money to subsidize prior to E M S services, that's kind of what we're having to do right now. The first cost recovery that, I don't know if you can see that, it would, by going with the first cost recovery, you could save on general fund $2 million. By going with partial cost recovery, just under a million dollars would be saved, and then sticking with the status quo, no money can be saved for, from the general here. So we would, we are absolutely dipping into reserves as armor and fund money, dipping into reserves to pay for E M S fees to subsidize the E M S utility rate. This is not something like, so for utility rate like water, sewer, those utilities that's standard by law, those are not subsidized by, those are totally paid from utility breakers. Not, that's not the case with, because it's not required by law, that's not the case with the E M S. And so the city is, is having to give in to our operating budget to pay for them. And to also keep in mind, from the survey, everyone's generally like very happy with their E M S services, their fire services, and police service, those types of things, are happy with that. So this is a predicament.
I have a question, do salaries come out of general fund or out of the fire?
So the salaries of our, there's allocated between the two funds, general fund and E M S. So not all salaries are out of general fund or out of E M S. So they're split allocation based on that allocation with the conditions again, it's just going to be all relative. So the fire Joe is 61% out of E M S and 39% out of.
And our call base, like, how, how our calls actually work right now is that 18% of our calls are actually fire related, and 82% are E M S related. So the allocation really should be at an 18, 82 split. We can't even get there with, with the current cost, it would be totally dipping into general fund subsidized, I mean, really getting in there, so.
So I'm thinking that at some point, the contract that was negotiated is being renegotiated, and it sounds like the competition is really fierce out there. And very likely, we will be needing to pay our staff more to keep them. Has, has that been going into?
So the assumptions?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they have built the assumptions, that type of increase. They have for, well, I'm sorry, for 25, the bill of this is going to be a maximum of 5% of wage increase, based on the contract through the structure of the bill. So that's built in, and I'd have to dig into the report, but I know a built-in assumption to a wage increase for that's what.
And they're very minimal, like, I'm talking 3%.
And that we don't, I, I believe.
Yeah, they're low because we don't want to put anything in writing that could compromise our negotiating position. So we have to keep those low, anything above that, they could use in negotiations and say, well, you built in 10%, you know, so we don't want to do that.
So my, my question then is, say we, we decided to go with a middle room option, and that doesn't necessarily guarantee that we're not going to need more general funds depending on how the labor negotiations turn out, is that right?
There is a possibility that if the fire emergency unit came in and asked for a very large wage increase, that's what they can ask, but it needs to be negotiated. And generally, it's a go, it's a go, it's a high, it's a low, like some agreement. But that is a risk we're having of stepping in something that may be something a little bit higher. And in that sense, we either have to give this rates, or we do subsidize this, we get from the general fund to cut, or excuse.
And you have to keep in mind, we, a $3 million deficit funding was passed last year, so we're already in the deficit. By going with the middle option, you'd be standing safe, just a little under a million dollars, savings and savings, so it's headed in the right direction. But going for the full cost recovery, the city would gain $2 million from the general. So, but that still won't even get us out of it. So there are other cuts I'd prefer to make, there are other ways of hard to find money.
So, you know, we've talked about economies of scale, and, and there doesn't seem to be much benefit to looking at, like the R F A model, where we combine with other cities to provide services. Is there something else that you want to, or how we can deliver the quality service?
So I'm going to tackle that a couple different ways. So just kind of go back to the R F A concept, is, you know, my, I do truly believe that R F A funded properly is the way to go for the central race hour area. And that would actually help the city too, because it takes the fire, the E M S, and all of, of the city government, it's a standalone entity, that is its own destiny, it lives outside the city, I hate to say this, you guys would have to worry about this. The problem with that is, it's not cheap. And what we're doing to make that a fact, it would cost roughly the same, what we're looking at with full cost recovery, maybe a little bit more for that operation to work. Where you can see savings with that other income, that it gets down the road, maybe able to streamline what you're doing operationally financially. So you have some opportunities there, but those are things that are realized down. And really, the big sale there in R F A in my mind too, is the disservice that you're providing, you're really providing better service at the same level, or maybe a little bit of an increase in the funding that's being paid for now. Now, looking at other ways to work with our neighbors, we're trying to do things on the operational level with joint response, suppliers and such. We've talked a little bit myself, with achieving the learn how, we're in chief of valley and cause models about, can we do like a purchase of a wall, melons, or something. And hey, that's a great idea, we kind of dived into it, well, we actually found out that our main number suppliers already given us a quality of price, because the whole county uses them. It's just that we buy our supplies ourselves, and we'll then buy theirs, but they're giving us that same type of, you know, the possible need of it here. So, you know, things like that, we've kind of tried to see a little. You know, the possibility of it being, um, so you know, things like that, we've kind of tried them to see what we do, but. We haven't had much success finding some, really getting somebody.
Thank you. First, uh, I was thinking about using firemen and, and, uh, uh, and toys. If the cost of giving a new toy in place, uh, it's a hundred thousand, whatever that is. I was thinking, could any of that money, that cost be a bonus? To firemen or EMS personnel who's saying? I'm saying that somebody stays on earth for five years, they get a five thousand dollar.
Oh, I see.
If they're ten years, they get twenty thousand.
We actually got a longevity broker. So as, as an employee stays longer, they hit certain benchmarks and starts at, uh, fifteen years. Uh, they get an extra eight percent. As they stay longer, that does increase. So you've got kind of this bonus program, you have longevity in play. And there's always the possibility of keeping that motivation a little bit to entice people to stick around.
I just, I have two things. And the second thing.
Sorry, I don't want to think about employees, Wendy. Wait, oh, see, I think really quickly, everything. So one thing, I don't, I don't even know if this is legal, but this is one that we do, you know, in driving school. Um, it, you know, you're, you're spending whatever to train them, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or whatever. Is it possible to have a contract when you bring them on to say, you know, you're going to contract work for us for ten years to pay this back? So, or they send it to a contract?
Yeah, so.
Or is that too much like an additional service?
Yes. So, uh, let me kind of, there's two, two things I'll touch is the, the cost of bringing somebody in. Um, we are a little bit different than the police and. And you can say, I'm not sure what you guys, maybe you bring somebody and sit them in off to the academy. Does that, that often sound appropriate, but I can.
Yeah, I see. That's right about right. Just to get them to where we are now training them on the road. If we hire them with background, get them through the academy and then we have to start training them here, about a hundred.
Or cheaper. Uh, when we hire firefighters, uh, we require the party to have their firefighter certification and their D certification. So we're not, if we're not having them happen because they're not going to the academy and such. So they're kind of coming already trained to us. The one exception that we'll is, uh, we don't have the firefighters with the certification requirement for their medics. And we, and in the way with that, we just to be able to find medics is that's, that's where we are for most of our medics. Trying to have those. Um, and if we have somebody that comes in, it's an integral element, it does not have a fire certification. We will say no to them. Uh, but that cost for us, it's less than the ten thousand dollars really. But there are other expenses that we have, uh, they're geared to the firefighting here. You have subjects that wear a medium and buying a medium again, a jacket, it's, you know, the whole set is fitted and it's almost forty, five hundred dollars for a set of firefighting. And all the other little things like that. So if we brought somebody in that did not have a firefighter. Uh, and all their gear and all the requirements that we have to do, we are probably in the interest of ten to twelve thousand dollars more than that. For a little. So each time I bring somebody in, it could keep up to that, but usually it's a little bit less.
So since the nuisance of having to find more people, find more people.
Yeah.
It's a nuisance for the expense for me.
Yeah, yeah. Just to give you an idea, our hiring is, um, since two thousand nineteen. I'm not, I'm not by myself, the department is hiring someone to be a hood of fifteen people. Fifteen to eighteen people. And that's just people coming to go. That's not retirements. You know, there's a few that was mixed in there. That's people coming here for a couple of years and then, you know, death is, is, that's, you know, it's. So this is awesome.
Thought my second question was, uh, was, so could we go for an option, like we go for option number two? Where we, uh, are taking less out of reserve. But then put it on a sliding scale so that within three years we would be taking zero out of reserve. Instead of just sticking to one of those three options, uh, start with one of them and then get up to the zero of reserves. Figure out where to run.
So, and Bruce, I'm going to kind of be on you a little bit, uh, just here, but. I might guess would be, and I'm back to this slide. So if you went with the middle, middle one there, that's option two. I know it's a little small there, but we started with option two with the forty-five thirty. And we lived there for twelve years. Uh, so year one, forty-five thirty, year two, forty-seven, thirty-three. And then year three, maybe jump to option one, year one from forty-seven up to sixty-seven then. So you're still, we jump like that. That's probably something to do with. Doable, but they, they're still going to be relying on general fund dollars, you know, in those first couple of years.
Yeah, exactly. And, and, but eventually you could get to a balance budget, guys.
I want you to be closer.
Yeah, yeah.
More questions from the chief?
Our hope to do is to get kind of a sense on what to bring forward to you next week. Um, if we're ready for that, it's more to discuss, it's, um, we get to bringing three options and having both, another option, having both. It's, it's better for us to get a sense so that we know what to bring forward to you.
Um, I, I know we've had some discussion on this with prior council meeting or two. Um, and I know that some other council members and I have expressed the fact that. We just don't see ourselves trying to support the number one, should have really all more than definitely the rate, the current rate. We just don't think that's doable or will fly with the citizens, uh, or with the council. Um, and the option where we really do very little, we're still going to be taken out of the general fund and the reserves is not going to help. So I think the middle option, option two is probably the most viable option and like, or just that maybe something where. You know, we start with the proposed increase for option two, do that for a few years and then maybe three, four to five years. We look at maybe slightly higher increases over those or something to get us out, maybe somewhere, but. Right now, I would be voting likely to support option two.
And another way to look at this, uh, jumping up to, uh, I have a rating to say option one, four years or so. Uh, when we're hitting about forty years, we're now going to get rid of that and start to talk about another rate study. This is more around, so that's probably going to come back as something very similar from age here and here and home.
So, um, I think, you know, we're all cognizant of the fact that the cost of living has just. Increased dramatically in the last few years and there are people that the income that they're bringing in has not increased. To keep up with the cost of living, you know, thirty dollars a month, like I've been hurting me. But some people, it would really hurt. And so we have to be, you know, aware of that. And then just think twice about the things that we want to spend millions of dollars on. Um, and, and can we do it? Can we decently do that? You know, there's certain things that we're talking about too, we can, you know. I think we need emergency services more, you know, so, yeah. So, yeah, I'm glad to think of all those things. So are there, is there any other feedback options that you would like to see brought forward?
I just, I put it one here. Is, well, it sounds like, I think that I think so far as we tend to land in this option two.
We'll bring that to you.
I can bring that to the council and explain as a, a rate resolution. And in looking at this with me also, I did throw in here, uh, what would mean the actual billing rates? That I talked about last time, with the natural service of increasing dollars. Um, again, just want to reiterate to the council that those averages that I'm talking about. The citizens themselves would not be seen back because of the help, which one of the works of billing insurance and writing off of that, it's not bad, it's bad. Um, I did one thing, I did feel a little involved a couple of days ago, this citizen asking a question. I talked about the write-off thing and this individual was kind of, kind of keyed in on that, thought that's stupid. You know, why not slightly? Uh, just to give you an idea of the amount of money that we would have provided in twenty-three of the ballots, build their patients. That did not have Medicare, because Medicare cannot even balance them. We would have received an extra one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That's how that became our Medicare care initiative. So by taking it right off the way, doing balance building, it's a change.
One thing I gotta say, you know, option three makes sense to me. Um, I feel like there's a lot that's going to change. You know, we just got to look at a federal level rolling down, this is an election year and hopefully things can change. Um, so I understand the government from how we have to put back and look at it, you know, due to all the increases and everything. Uh, however, it seems like if we tackle the issues downtown, we can bring more. There's this into town, you know, into town, we want to depend so much on all the holders around here. Uh, so I, option three to me makes sense just because there's so many unknowns in our future right now.
And to speak to that point, I just, there's something says that in the future, if, if we're able to receive more. Then knowing our EMS utility around here is a lot, are now tracking much higher than anticipated, we can draw. I know, you know, there's that club, there's always that possibility or, you know, can you train?
You probably get a lot of certain EMS phones dropped. Probably a shot.
So, so, so why I was just asking, Sam, this is, that's everything. So option two is going to be an increase of probably around seventeen dollars for, for the holders or the people that are looking here, anybody that has refugees.
Right in there.
Around seventeen dollars. Okay.
Yeah, I got one. Okay. Well, if you guys have any further questions, please feel free to give me a moment. Our student email, then, uh, I'll give you the information you need, uh, you'll read something to the council.
Uh, before I go, uh, uh, sorry, I just wanted to let you guys know, everybody before anybody leaves, that. The next Wednesday, we will be held at Grace Harbor College. That's, uh, May twenty-second, uh, this is, uh, sure not going, it's been dark as you were not going. Um, everybody doesn't call it the South, South, South Everly. Okay, Gilbert, Charlie Chalkers, up there. Uh, is this map available or?
If I have maps, if anybody wants one.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, hold as I have other services for, so, uh, direct, direct marketing to make the pay.
All right, thank you. On the next topic we're going to tonight is to talk about the necessary improvements to one eighteen West Wishka Street. I wanted to go over some history, um, regarding how we got to where we are today. The reason why I'm going to provide you this information and why I'm providing you the memo that you received is that. A contract will be coming to you for you to approve, um, not approve of. The acceptance of the two point two million dollars from Washington State Department of Commerce, uh, for the appropriation. To remodel one eighteen West Wishka Street to be used for museum purposes and as a visitor information center. So in March of twenty twenty-two, the city purchased one eighteen West Wishka. Uh, at that time, the gateway project was still in process. Uh, and the city was looking for a building to house a museum and store the museum artifacts. So we purchased one eighteen West Wishka in March and then in June, the city applied for a capital heritage grant. Uh, and that was meant the building to be strictly for museum purposes. So we received that grant and that money can be used for reimbursement for partial, um. Partial reimbursement for the cost of the purchase of the building and also to hire a consultant to provide the architectural engineering. And then in July of twenty twenty-two, the council voted that all activity related to the gateway center project be suspended. So that project been stopped. In February of twenty twenty-three, our city administrator put in a request to city council. To authorize her to recover the commerce funding for the gateway center project. That's the two point two million dollars that was allocated to the city for that project. Uh, that we had expended funds for, but had not been reimbursed for. And we did receive that allocation. In December of twenty twenty-three, the city repaid nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. To the Washington State Department, Department of Commerce, uh, because we did not complete the gateway center project. In April last month, um, I, Ruth and I received copies of the contract. Uh, for the one point seven million, we're waiting on the final contract for the four hundred and ninety thousand. That gets us to the two point two million dollars. And that money is to be used for improvements at one eighteen West Wishka Street. For museum purposes and a visitor information center. Next slide, please. Capital heritage grant, we received, um, a little over six hundred thousand dollars. We were able to use, we are able to use and we have not expended the funds yet, two hundred and forty thousand dollars to hire a consultant for design. We were able to receive thirty-three percent of the cost of the building purchase. And we're using some of those funds, which is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to cover our sixty-six percent match. Uh, the project must be completed by June of twenty-five. This includes remodel of all twenty-seven thousand square feet of the building. That's for architectural and engineering and the building is to be used for historical purposes. The other requirement, once we expend those funds, is that the city must own the building and use it for historical purposes for thirteen years. Noncompliance requires repayment of those events to the state. Next slide. For Washington State Commerce Appropriations, that's a two point two million. Uh, where we pivoted the project so that we can use that fun, use those funds to remodel one eighteen West Wishka. So that it can be used for museum purposes and as a visitor information center. The scope of work, um, for the project is for all three stories, which is twenty-seven thousand square feet. Uh, attached in that memo that I gave you is a list, um, of the improvements that we included in the scope of work. It also includes, um, use of some of the spaces for innovative spaces. Like community meeting rooms, um, educational rooms. That project must also be completed by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Obviously, it's May of twenty-four, it's not possible for us to complete this project by then. We can put in a request to the state for reappropriation of those funds, again, to extend the project to June of twenty-seven. But that would be the last extension. I mean, the project needs to be totally completed by June of twenty twenty-seven. The city has owned the building for ten years and noncompliance requires repayment of state funds. Similar to what we just had to do on what we were paid the nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Next slide, please. We have some really rough cost estimates because we have not hired a consultant to actually come in and do any design. Or any type of real structural analysis. Uh, rough estimates that I've received from two, um, different architectural engineering consultants is that total remodel cost. Would be six million to ten million dollars. The estimate for just the seismic and structural for the, for a building that size is about one million dollars. That was not included in the budget that was provided to Commerce at the time. If we wanted to bear minimum improvements, that's making pretty much zero changes to the rooms in the building. That's doing only absolutely what they have to do. It's about, I have. It's about, I have four million there, but as of today, I would say it's closer to four point five million dollars. Also, the amount that we included, uh, some different options that we could consider. Uh, we could remodel only the first floor. Uh, that helps us to keep the requirements, um, for seismic, hopefully, so we don't remodel. Or the fifty percent of the building make changes so we don't have to do seismic improvements. Um, we developed a plan to complete the remodel, the second and third floors of the future, using a phased approach. Um, this option may not comply with the capital heritage grant or Commerce. Uh, we have to talk with them about what they consider scope of work compliance based on, um, the contract. Uh, and if we did not comply again, of course, we would have to repay all the funding. Um, we would still need to lease the warehouse. It's about five dozen dollars a month. Because if we only remodeled the first floor, that wouldn't be enough room to bring the artifacts into the building. Um, another option is we could not spend the capital heritage grant funds. Not accept the Washington State Commerce appropriation, halt the project. And look at other options, which could include selling the building and purchasing a building that costs less to remodel. Uh, we could proceed with the project as currently funded, which includes spending the capital heritage grant money. And the Washington State Commerce funds. That means that you guys with the city and the council should be prepared to spend an additional six to eight million dollars to complete the project. Uh, another option is we could sell the building, use proceeds for the care and storage of the collection. Work with a museum consultant to determine which artifacts should be kept, um, and transferred or sell the items to be surplus. Contracted local museums, um, like Tulsa Museum or the Shandys Island Museum in Montesano. To display our artifacts, um, or then look for an alternate building to purchase. When I say that the city should be pre- prepared to spend another six to eight million dollars. I say that because if we spend this two point two million. Whether we get grant funding in the future or whether we get another state appropriation in the future, we have to complete this project. And as you know, we have a little art station and a police station that we're also trying to go. And they would be competing for the same funds if we're looking at appropriations from the state. Yes?
Yep, I'm ready for questions.
In fact, I made this note very, I'm pretty sure I made it strongly in the best. I do not believe that the city should be in the business of operating the museum. Uh, we have a lot of other priorities in the city. We have a lot of things that are going to cost a lot of money that we need more than we need a museum. Uh, I think if the local community members want a museum. Encourage citizens to put together a trust or a foundation of some kind. A board and have them, uh, work with the city. To rent or acquire the museum, um, collection and. Purchase their own property or use one even they have to do. Um, the costs that have been mentioned. Anywhere from two hundred and twenty two dollars a square foot to well over three hundred dollars, almost four hundred dollars a square foot. If you go to the ten million dollar figure, you talk to three hundred and seventy dollars a square foot. And from my experience as a commercial real estate appraiser, that builds you, that should build you. One pretty darn fine brand new building for costs like that. And I can't see justifying spending anywhere near that kind of money. Uh, for a museum, especially just renovating an old building. Um, one of the things that I did know in particular, all this initial baseline budget, a couple, two and a half million or so. Um, which I will say overall, I've looked at all of these line item costs. And other than here outrageous, so I guess this is kind of a bear bones. Minimum of expenses going to be required to accept this building. Be basic building codes, but I did know the, um, project management fee on this. Damn, I gotta get out of the business idea of going into project management. That's absolutely ridiculous to have nine hundred thousand dollar fee plus or minus, uh, somewhere there. For a two to half million dollar project, I don't know where that number came from, but that's way ridiculous.
That's for a ten million dollar project.
Well, that's still.
It's ten to seven of the project costs.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, we've got other priorities and issues and, um, there's no end to supporting. Anything related to the museum or anywhere near these costs. Thank you.
Agreed. Well, I was just gonna say, um, a couple notes here, but you painted a pretty good picture. I think, uh, uh, already could have been a little different, so the picture wasn't quite so bleeding. There's, there is opportunity for us as the city to, to. Find a nonprofit, it could be the friends in the museum, it could be somebody else to run the museum. There is also an option of, uh, figuring out a way to get the collection in their hands. And it would still be, the building would be owned by the city, the first floor could be done and the money you have. And then the friends of the museum could figure out how to get the rest of the building done. And I, I think we're presenting this huge, huge bill that doesn't have to be there. And it was kind of like, I, uh, nothing against Eric Larson. But that gateway center just kept, it was just. A lot of range is how high priced everything was. And then, uh, it's the way it's worth it, it just makes it, and so. The people are obviously gonna vote no for it because it's just like Eric said, it's one of the saving of stock buildings, so if you wanna pay for it. This tax being raised or that tax, how do you wanna pay for it? But the whole project was the same way, but you never used that phrase. Anyway, I'm just saying, I, I think it's worked in the way that makes it sound like I wanna get this off my desk. And out of my hands, when I think there are opportunities, we own a collection. We have a group that's interested in, in running a museum for us. It's not something the city should be at, I don't believe. Uh, most other cities have a nonprofit or some organization that runs a museum that might. The collection may be owned by the city or in the hands of the, of the nonprofit. I'm just saying. I think there's avenues that will cost a lot less than ten, ten million dollars, I think, with the money that we do have. The first floor can be done, we can have a museum, we can have a visitor center. We can take the, uh, old museum annex, fix that up. Move the collection in there and not have to pay five thousand dollars a month for the rent of the building that we are using right now. Just think there's, there's avenues, if you're looking at it as though. I want us to have a museum and I want us to move this forward, then, um. Then there's a lot of options, but if you present it in this light, I think this, this thing is. Everybody's, everybody's gonna vote no for ten million dollars, but we don't necessarily have to pay that. You also pointed out many times that we're gonna have to pay this money back if we don't get it done. Sure, we're gonna have to pay it back, but there are ways we can get it done. And I'd like, I just, nothing against you, director, I just.
I know it sounds doom and gloom.
It sounds.
Transfer it to France, we can't just remodel the first floor. We have a scope of work.
I want us to ask about the scope of work, you know, for sure. Rather than just saying we might not, they might not cover the scope work, I think you need to ask them. Correct? I'm just, just saying.
The scope of work says we're gonna remodel the twenty seven thousand square foot three story building. We can certainly ask for clarification. I just want everyone to, I'm being upfront, I know it sounds doom and gloom. We just paid back almost a million dollars because we didn't complete a project. My name is on this project and I want you guys to have all the information. There certainly is a chance. That we could get some great money in the future, but, but there isn't a guarantee.
So I'm interested in knowing, you know, or to any of us know. What kind of visitor count we have at the museum when it was open to the Arberry Building? How many visitors were they getting? And how many visitors, maybe if you want to go on current count, how many visitors is the Paulson family getting? And would they be interested in sharing space with us or showing some of our, um, historical, um, things that we have? Um, but yeah, I, I'm interested in earning millions of dollars for ten people a month or a hundred people a month? And is it gonna make it?
I know I've got the numbers from John Larson because I did ask him, um, what type of. Income they generate? I think they bring in about nine thousand dollars a year, um, on entry fees.
So there was a, a charge to go see it?
Yes.
Uh-huh, and, and I'm just, oh, I suggested.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, and, and, well, we don't have a count, a head count. It's a lot of difference, you know, some people could just give you a hundred dollars, some people might go for free, but I'd be interested in the head count. Of how many people did visit that.
I think how this museum would be supported is that the curving, uh, the remodeling gallery would be directly across the street. And just kind of be able to complement each other, so we may be an increase also on a main arterial. Um, as opposed to where the other location was in the neighborhood, um, kind of a way to revise. I think it, it was rated like the number one place to visit and property at one point, the museum was allowed to visit here, so I mean, so. Funny thing, Chris, it's not a really big thing for the city. We have to create some sort of cultural or historic contribution that we're investing in our city this way, so we can't forget it.
But it's all that's hard stuff, we can't sit an ambulance out to a.
So that, that's the, that's the thing is that, like, what are the questions that we only have so much, right? One of the questions we asked ourselves was, how far can we make it to a million dollars? Like, what can that, and that's, and that's what we did in, um, in there, like, it, it barely. Um, I don't think that I remember anything that was included in that, but it was. The elevator and windows, the new room, like, doing the things that possibly we had to get done and then possibly leaning on volunteer.
And that's, and that's, that's a grant, you know, but I'm not gonna expect us to do the entire building and then, you know, come up with, you know, eight, eight million dollars to.
Right, there's a possibility you could go back to them, um, and, and ask to change the scope and just possibly renovate the first two levels. That's something we can, we can see because they already allow us to change the scope and the project, like the gated project to them. I'm just hesitant to go back, uh, you know, often to do this, I just want some direction.
I'm not being, you know, you know.
I have two questions. Um, one is, there's a lot of unknowns with what we're being presented with tonight. Um, could you go back to Commerce and ask those questions and then come back to us with the answers? So especially, um, the timing ones, because even. There's, it sounds like there's no way we can get the project included in the timing that people are gonna do them. So that needs to be renegotiated with the relatives. Um, and then again, the scope. Is there some of the scope that they're just gonna say, no way, it's gonna be this or nothing? Um, so that we're able to really, um, look at the spectrum of possibilities of the boards. And, um, better understand what we've been getting for money.
So I think the Commerce money is a little more flexible because it is direct application out of the governor's budget. Where the historic preservation money, I'm sorry, but I got that wrong. Um, is really about, and it's actually not that great of a grant because it's like, it only covers thirty three percent of. And V F become sixty six percent, which I think Stacy was going to use the purchase of the building as, as the matching funds. For that, so it's, it's, so I think we do have, we have a great team at Commerce who's worked with us, who have this whole thing, they've been great. Or a friend or parent of us, they, you know, kind of agree with us, they're on this whole process. So I think that, like, there is an opportunity to go back and just kind of talk to them and see if we can change the scope to. Reduce like to, to cover the things like elevator, the roofs, the HVAC system, the important things. And then see how far, and just let them know that the two point two or the two billion dollars is the point to get this as far. That you would like, this is what we can do.
So my other question was that anyone looking to find the real things being used in this order collection currently? Because, you know, it's got a fire system, it's all on one level, it's certainly, you know, for a seismic, we sound, um. It's, um, is that, um, could that be an option that we sell this property and.
Over our house, we're restoring.
Yeah.
Which is owned by a biolectra currently.
And it comes with a nice parking lot and outdoor displaying space and.
No, nobody has asked that, that they were interested in selling that eight thousand square foot space.
Oh, maybe that's another way to look as well.
It's not large enough to house the collection and have a public museum this time. Um, we definitely would either have an addition, additional storage or reduce the size of the collection.
Another thing that the council really needs to consider as well is the, um, ongoing operation plot. But there will be a ongoing operation plot, I'll have to figure out, like, you know, I think we paid like. Thirty five thousand, the friends of the museum in the past.
Twenty five thousand dollars a year to the friends and we cover the. Gas, electricity, so it's about, I think it's about forty thousand dollars a year, yeah, was spent to cover the museum fund. Uh, at that time, cap was attended in the building, so the lease. The rental lease that we, the money that we brought in from the lease covered the rest of the costs for maintenance of the building. Um, you would expect it probably cost around a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, for the spending on the low end. That just depends on what type of contract we have with the nonprofit, if we're paying for an employee. Um, yes, who's, yeah, if we have, if we have a contract with the nonprofit, we put it on them, that's. Saves considerably, because if we're operating it, then we're having staff in there, you know, who's the janitorial, who's cleaning it? You know, we have to buy trash cans and tables and that's it in there.
I think, I think also, uh, if the nonprofit is doing it, they get to work that a lot cheaper than we as the city, we have to pay prevailing wages. They could have a unit come in and do electric for free.
Buy all things.
Yeah, I mean, I think a nonprofit, I mean, it has a lot more options, plus, but like. I think the whole community is really behind their museum. And they're proud of it and it's a fixture in their community and they buy random tickets for cars and they. They support their museum and I believe if we get our museum out of the city's hands, the community doesn't really. Trust us be longer with the, to run a museum for them. I think they'd be, have to be excited. People would step up to help, you know, but I, I think it'd have to be out of our hands, because they don't wanna fund something then. Any year you have the city decide they don't want it anymore, you know, or can't afford it, so. I really, they get it out of our hands is number one, is the best way to go. Thanks. What are the takes value in?
I would say based on what survived the fire and the appraisal that was done at that time. Maybe around five hundred thousand dollars.
Let's start action.
The fire apparatus and the curving.
I mean, she has some tires from, they were definitely getting there, and, you know, that would be, it is part of the question. There's a lot we haven't, haven't, um. Catalogued all of that, so you don't know what's all the thing.
I have two questions. On something based on what I just heard, were, were paying the friends of the museum the money?
No, when the museum was operating in the Arberry Building. The city had a contract with the friends and they received twenty five thousand dollars a year.
For what staff?
To hire staff, yep, and to operate the museum on behalf of the city.
Okay, um, second question, more important one is. I wanna make sure I'm clear, have we already accepted any monies? Towards the museum that, and balance we don't perceive we're gonna have to pay back?
No.
Thank you.
That's what, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
We're coming, we're, we're at that point now, thinking forever to get this contract.
Yeah.
Here at the point now, we want to bring something forward to you. Or we wanted to understand the commitment. Um, because it's going to take a lot to get this, this bill, this specific building. To a place where we can get the collection in there. It requires a lot of work. If you haven't seen it, maybe that's something Stacy can schedule with all of you to even come see how much work is in there. It does need to be. It does need to be like, um, supported more because it only can handle so much, so much weight per square foot, that sort of thing, like.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five pounds per square foot.
Seventy-five pounds per square foot, we need that, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a lot of work, if you do HVAC system and you do elevator, it needs a new roof. So it's, it does require a lot of work. I don't know how far $2.2 million we can get given the amount of work and the expensive things it's gonna need windows and then we have to get to the point of renovating. It, um, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Josh, but Josh, uh, Patrick is here. He works in community development, he kind of like looked over the building very briefly and he gave us some insight because it also will require, there's like certain thresholds that have to be as well. If we renovate over 49%, I'm, I'm sorry, your better is, would you like to kind of say, if we renovate X percentage of the building, then we have to.
Over 50%.
Yeah, over 50% of the building, then it will require us to size the threshold with the entire building. But if we stay under that threshold, then we don't have to. But is that the right thing to do, given that it's such a, so there's a lot of, you know, pros and cons here. And so. I heard that about getting rid of the collection, seeing if there's a nonprofit to take a refund. I'm hearing that, is that something you want us to explore?
Yeah, I think our community would love to have music at that. So how it gets there might not be the road to the mountain, but, um, but I would want, I would like somebody else out there. I know the friends and people, I don't know how they, if I get a money there, they'll, it's a sign. And we want them to just, because they don't know, they don't think they're in charge of the current. That's right, if they owned it, they were charged with.
And then our goal has always been, I commend Director Barnum, she really retired, and then Director Scott, he was part of really kind of helped pivot the funds. Because we admitted last year, when we had a museum board to get a building and things like that. So I really commend their work in finding these funds. And again, these funds don't require any match because our goal has been to use little to no city money to pay for this, to pay for the remodel, things like that. So and they've accomplished that and find security in these funds. But now we're at that point where we need to make it simple because this will require a really long term. Possibly more, uh, possibly.
Um, yeah, I've only been back to the city for a couple of years, but I do know that historically this community has had a number of very prominent families with a lot of money. And maybe there is one out there still that would give approach and approach the right way, would consider investing in and acquiring a museum or building a museum for the city as some kind of a diversion track. Heritage, cultural heritage thing for the community and it'd be a great tax write-off for them too. Um, I don't know if there are still some of those like that out there. Um, you know, we don't have the EK million bishop, but I know they've done all their stuff, the bishop center. The Weather Heights Foundation, they committed every 10 minutes, it's not the Rocklands, you know, Rocklands. Maybe there are some others who may only consider that and they have their name on it. You know, it would be in like a Tulsa museum, it'd be like a Rockland museum or something like that for Aberdeen. Where the Kurt Cobain museum, we get contact, they, all the, you know, the Moses, they grow, or what was it? This is, they're, no, no, the seven, whatever, and these people, maybe they have some money. So maybe they have some money they won't put it into a museum and call the Aberdeen Cobain Museum or something like that.
Their model.
Their models.
Oh, I think you might, we have to, yeah. The Cobain Museum, yeah, we don't want, yeah, no, no, I like where you're going. The mayor and I were invited to visit for the city of Port Angeles and we saw a huge performing arts center that was built by a pretty dominant, uh, different families, um, historical families in over, and so, and we know that that is a possibility.
We also, we also have to put on, um, put all nation as land. I don't exist then, but I would love us to have an interpreter center for the nation and the first people that I think had something like that, to a museum.
I like that idea.
Well, I think there's lots of options to look at. Build a, if they call it, that's, and that's, and that's. Let's get that wall of center.
Was that, is there anything on you?
I have a.
Wall of Center.
Have you got any space for the wall?
Anything else, comments, questions?
I think this has been a very, very helpful conversation, thank you so much. I think it sounded like we have some good reflection on how to proceed. Directors, do you need anything else that would be helpful there? Thank you very much.
You're right on. There's nothing else that maybe to hear?